Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening and welcome everyone to the July first meeting of the Ashland City Council. Thank you for joining us. To our viewers at home, thank you to members of council, Mayor Miller, Attorney Bush, Director Paxton. Welcome all. We have a rather abbreviated agenda this evening with a hearing at seven twenty, so we'll try to fill this space for the next twenty minutes. First item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes from the June seventeenth meeting. If there are no additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes, I'll ask for a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Minutes will stand approved. First ordinance this evening will be an ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance to amend appropriations for the calendar year two thousand twenty-five and declare an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Good evening.
Evening, Larry.
This ordinance here amends our appropriations and the purpose of the amendment is because of the, the mayor announced, I believe, at the last council meeting about that the city was becoming involved in the cemetery, not improvements, but reconstruction of some of those damaged headstones and things, monuments at the cemetery. As of this evening, the city has received twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars in donations for that project. The city is only the conduit at this point. The city will, is going to work with the Cemetery Board. They're going to be ordering the work. They will be approving the payment and we will pay the bill, but they will be working exclusively with the city to go and make sure that they get the work done that they want to get done and that it's done to their satisfaction and they sign off on the invoice. In an effort to do that, we had to first of all, put a donation line in for that project and then an expense line. And by creating this additional appropriations, at this point, we'll be able to disperse that money to them or to their vendors as quickly as they need it.
Any comments, questions, discussion?
Larry, would you mind sharing the total of the damage? I'm not sure that last meeting we actually knew what the damage actually was and I, we just got it tonight, so.
Okay. I had a conversation with the, one of the Vice President of the Cemetery Board and they estimate that the damages to the headstones would be about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Maybe the mayor would have better numbers than I would, but when I talked to the Vice President in working with her on the aspects of this, how this will function for them, at this point, why, that's what they're estimating it would cost to restore those damages at this point. Some of those headstones were hand carved and so in doing that, how do you replace that? Most of the headstones nowadays are granite and then they have the names, names and information engraved into them. How do you fix a hand carved headstone?
Right.
You don't. Yeah. Very unfortunate.
Is there any insurance coverage for the property?
They, they carry liability insurance for the cemetery, obviously. They do insure their structures that the cemetery has on site there, but how do you insure a headstone?
Yeah.
It, it's just impossible to do. The families buy the headstone, put it onto grave and, and it's really not part of the fixed structure of the cemetery. It's only a headstone. I don't mean to say disrespectfully, but it's a headstone that the family member has purchased and put onto grave, so, yeah, unfortunate.
It is truly unfortunate.
Yeah.
And on behalf of the council, I want to just express the council's dismay and disappointment that something like this could happen in our fair city, especially to this extent. There's so much damage out there.
Yeah.
So.
While we're talking about that, I had a conversation with some of the officers of the Elks Lodge yesterday and they told me of their plans to donate at least thirteen thousand dollars toward a security system to monitor and protect. So I want to say special thanks to the Elks Lodge for their plans to do that, to help out. And that's over and above what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
Great.
I, when I, I forgot to mention that you can also donate directly to the Cemetery Association. They are a five oh one three, one thirteen, I think it is. It's a cemetery nonprofit organization as well. Certainly you can, as the mayor mentioned last meeting, you can donate to the city and it is exclusively for the Cemetery Board to handle those projects that they need to get done in an effort to restore it as best they can.
Yeah, the city has no ownership in the.
Absolutely not.
Cemetery, but in case like this, we all need to pitch in and do what we can to help out.
And I will reiterate, the reason that the city took the lead on it was because there were a number of the veterans organizations and the historical society were getting phone calls, as well as our own police department were getting phone calls from individuals that wanted to donate and they wanted to know where was best to donate. And after several days of those discussions, those parties all felt that it was best if the city were to be the central collection point. That way we could make sure that there was a very detailed accounting of who contributed, what they contributed, and then what the money was used for. And of course, you know that our books are audited every year and we do have to make sure that they balance. So they knew there would be a strict record keeping done of all these funds. I think that the bright spot in all of this, yes, we wish it wouldn't happen. I think it was more or less just folks goofing off, trying to cause trouble, quite candidly. I don't think there was any organized effort. It was simply a foolish act on their port. But the good news is, look how quick this community rallied and responded. Almost weekly, you have individuals calling, wanting to put on a community event. I know Mr. Kyle has had people reach out to him to raise money and I would say that's pretty impressive that we could get twenty-five thousand dollars in just about one week or two week period and within days have enough money to cover the cost of the veterans monument that was harmed. So all in all, it definitely, once again, though, reveals what kind of people we have here. Not only patriotic veteran-loving people, but also people that are willing to chip in and help their neighbor fix a problem in their, in their lives. So all in all, we'll get through it and I think we'll actually have a better situation at the cemetery when we're done.
Larry, I have one more question. I see on here that if they've given their donation in-house or a credit card, there's a receipt. Are you sending the receipts or is the cemetery sending the texts?
We are.
Okay, alright.
And we have not done it yet, but everyone on that list will receive a letter from us.
Okay.
You know, if, if you donate to a local government, it is tax deductible.
Sure.
We do send you a letter saying, thank you for your donation and please check with your accountant as you prepare your taxes. But in doing that, everyone will get that, a copy of that letter regardless of the amount, so that they can, first of all, acknowledge that they, their gift and second of all, the possible benefit of that gift.
Alright, thank you.
And of course, this isn't new territory.
Sure.
Because we have collected donations for pickleball courts, for tennis courts.
Yes.
And a variety of our other projects.
Absolutely.
Everything from Christmas decorations to mini golf renovations, so.
I just didn't know if it was coming from the cemetery or from the city, which they should expect it from, so.
Right.
So, thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Hopefully we can help and assist in.
Yes.
Indemnifying this property, this sacred property, I should say.
Absolutely.
So, okay, with that, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye. Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Ordinance fifty-seven dash twenty-five.
Next, we have an ordinance that will require full reading. It was added late this afternoon. So with that, I'll begin. We have an ordinance authorizing the issuing of a then and now certificate for the following attached expenditures for the city of Ashland, Ohio and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Ashland, Ohio has authorized the purchase of the attached expenditures and whereas such purchase for goods and services has now been completed and whereas the Ohio Revised Code, Section fifty-seven oh five point four one D, requires a certificate of the fiscal officer of the subdivision to be issued before contracts and expenditures are incurred and whereas the attached engineering division invoice totaling thirteen thousand, four seventy-one point eight five was acquired before the purchase order with a certificate issued for said encumbrances and whereas the attached invoices exceed three hundred, three thousand, three thousand dollar threshold amount for the Director of Finance to issue. Whereas the council desires to affirm and ratify such expenditures and authorize the issuing of a then and now certificate for the following said expenditures. Whereas the above reason, this, for the above reason, the ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of said city of Ashland, Ohio, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of Ashland, state of Ohio, its members thereto concurring, Section one, that the Director of Finance is authorized to issue a then and now certificate on behalf of the City Council for the city of Ashland, Ohio, and in doing so, pay the invoices attached here too. Section two, for this reason, it is necessary to provide authorization for the issuing of the then and now certificate and payment of said invoices. This ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary for the preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of said city of Ashland. And Section three, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage by council and approving, and approval according to Section twelve of the Charter of the City of Ashland, Ohio. So ends the reading. Larry, I'll hand it over to you.
I, I certainly apologize for the lateness of this ordinance. I want to thank your trusty, trustworthy clerk here who I chickenly left a note on her desk and ran as quickly as I could, so that.
She is trustworthy.
She's very much trustworthy and I'm a little wary of setting this close to her, but that's okay. But no, in all seriousness, this hit my desk at three thirty this afternoon. It is for engineering of our two fifty walking paths out on East Main Street. If you look at the invoices, they were presented to us a period of time ago. They had to be certified. The, if anything can fall through a crack in the floor, this is it, because we had to first of all, create a fund to, to expense this money as well as receive the grant funding into it. And then after that, we had to create the appropriations, which I believe was last council meeting. So these invoices were received by the city in ample time, but because of the processes that I had to go through, it took a period of time for us to get all that created, appropriated, and everything else. It was anticipated, these expenses. It's not something that we magically just did. No, we'd, we'd been, this council has authorized that. Unfortunately, because of the practice of creating the fund and appropriating the money, it took a little longer than what we thought and this is why you have them tonight, certainly.
Any discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Aye. Again, I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ordinance fifty-eight dash twenty-five.
Now, this might be a good time to explain as we do every now and then that the reason we suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days strictly, or means just that. If we read this three separate meetings, it would be a month and a half before these invoices would be paid. So for these routine expenditures, like we're seeing tonight, it just makes sense to pay the people what, what we're owing them. So, thank you, Larry, for bringing that in.
In fact, in this instance, it would be September by the time.
Right. There is good reason for that. And with that, it's seven seventeen. Let's keep moving down through the agenda here. We have no resolutions this evening. No old business or new business unless council has something to bring forward. Hearing none, we'll go right to Finance Director's report.
The only report I have is that we have now completed successfully two thousand twenty-four audit. We filed it with the state of Ohio as well as a couple of clearinghouse for government audits and we have now officially put two thousand twenty-four to bed, I hope. And so in doing that, that takes a lot of effort in order to get all that completed and I appreciate the staff and the city personnel who worked on that, to get that accomplished. That is no small feat, so.
Certainly. All right. Any comments or questions for Mr. Paxton?
Council comments. We'll muddle through that. Dan, would you like to go first?
I would like to dispel a rumor that so far only I have heard, and that is, I can safely say that Ashland will not be the future home of the Cleveland Browns Dome Stadium. So if you hear that, put that to rest. That is not going to happen. We are not going to be the future home of the Dome Stadium for Cleveland Browns.
Oh darn.
Uh, I do want to recognize, though, we always hear people coming forward with complaints. Thank you for the people who were able to make the repairs to the curb and the crosswalk in the Stone Creek Development. They've done that this week. It looks great. They've reseated the ground there, so that has been restored and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good. Mrs. Woodward?
Um, I have a few things. First is fireworks. I want to talk about fireworks. They're going off all around my house and I want to remind everybody that it is, I believe, a hundred and fifty feet that you have to be from your neighbor. Is that correct? I'm pretty sure I looked it up.
One fifty by one fifty clear space.
Yes.
No pets, children.
Yes.
Spectators or dwellings.
Yes, or farmland.
So if I could add on to that, that the vast majority of the city lots in our great city.
Yes.
Are much smaller than that and I would say the average is sixty to eighty feet wide, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty feet deep. So you'd need two city lots with no houses or people on it, except for the person lighting the fireworks.
Exactly, yes.
Good. I love fireworks just as much as anybody, but you can't set them off if you live on a city lot most times.
Correct.
So.
And as a dog owner, my dog does not like them. She freaks out every time my neighbors shoot them across my yard. So, stop shooting fireworks.
And so, of course, that brings up the point that a lot of communities took action to ban fireworks in their city, even though the state made it legal. And this council tried to take a liberal interpretation and give people the chance to exercise good judgment, but I know that you get lots of calls. I've started getting them too about fireworks going off and I guess the solution in the end would be to ban them in the city limits, which like you just stated, wouldn't take away much because already you can't shoot them off.
Right.
According to the law in most people's neighborhoods, so.
So, um, that was, that was my first thing. The second thing, I just want to mention that the Circle K down on Main Street is trying to open this weekend, so it is.
And it's impressive.
It is a very.
Yes, it is.
That's a nice place.
I drive by it every day on the way to work and how quickly they're.
Yes, and it looks good and they've landscaped it up and it's really cleaned up that corner.
Yes, they, they have done a very nice job, so. And then I have gotten a few inquiries, maybe you can talk about this, about West Main.
Oh, yes, I plan to talk about that as well.
Somebody said the bomb squad was practicing there and I'm like, no.
No, the bomb squad wasn't practicing there. So what I will tell you is, I believe last summer, everyone endured the closer, closure of West Main Street because the county was replacing a bridge. Now, at this point, it's just a coincidence, but several hundred feet from where that bridge was replaced, the road has begun to sink. And those that travel that frequently, you would know very much what I'm talking about because it is a big, it's smooth, you don't have a big bump or anything, but it definitely was dipping more and more. And so our city crews hired folks to take a look to see with radar what was happening under the pavement, couldn't get it figured out. And so this week, our city crews did start digging. And basically what they found is that in that particular area, there are big, they gave me measurements, but I don't want to misstate them, but large areas where there's simply voids. So I don't know if it's soil or gravel or what, but something is washing out in that area under the pavement. And they don't know at this point what's causing it. They do have a plan to fill it, but with concrete and so on, but that's what's happening right now and that's why it was closed, I think, yesterday and today. Is it still closed?
Yes, it is.
Yes, okay.
Is, is that directly adjacent to the repair that was done?
Well, it is in the vicinity.
Okay.
Now, this is a very, very sensitive point because the county engineer and the contractor that replaced the bridge are insistent that it has absolutely nothing to do with their work. And in fact, this county engineer has shared with me that the contractor has even produced photos before they began their work of replacing the bridge that show that the pavement was starting to dip there. And I, I don't, I know they're honest folks, the county engineers, so I take him at his word. But it's still, it does beg the question, of course, could it have been heavy equipment that maybe jarred something or was too heavy in that particular area? I don't know. But the bottom line is, we are having to address it and that's what's going on right now. I don't have a timeframe on how long it will be closed, but that is the reason.
That was the next question. When will the street be?
And I do not have the answer to that.
For safety, I'd rather it be closed.
Yes.
Because we don't want to sinkhole and somebody falling in it, so.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you, Mayor.
No.
Very good. Mr. Miller?
I also have two things. The legal fireworks will begin July fourth at the Freer Field at nine forty-five approximately, give or take five minutes or so. And as like last year, you feel free to park in the Freer Field area and police will be available afterwards to assist with exiting the area. So that's where the legal fireworks will be. Second thing is, as I was pondering what to talk about in my comments, I was talking to my wife and she said, well, why don't you talk about all the things that are available in our little town of Ashland? So she started, as she does, she started making a list and uh. This is just page one. Yeah. Just to name a few, pool, mini golf, golf, tennis, pickleball, dog park, mountain box trail, concerts in the parks, city parks, Sandusky, Jameson Creek, walks, play parks, county parks close by, Audubon, Byers Woods, Fireman's Cabin. There's library programs, there's programs at the Crock Center, great restaurants, ice cream. I could go on, but we do have a lot of.
Absolutely.
Things to do, so if anybody's bored, it's their own fault.
No one, no one should be bored in Ashland, Ohio.
Exactly. I rest my case.
Very good. Thank you, Dennis. Mr. Kyle?
I won't go back into fireworks again. Sorry for filling up your comments, Angela, but there is something I did want to bring up and that is, I wanted to congratulate Dylan Carr. He was a twenty twenty-five recipient of the All Ohio Excellence in Journalism Award. That's kind of a big deal.
Wow.
So congratulations, Dylan.
Congratulations.
And that's all I have.
All right, very good. Well, Mayor?
All right, now I will tell you, if you'd like, we're actually at the point of the.
Yeah, we can go back to the hearing now. And with that, this is the two thousand twenty-five budget hearing.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Yeah, yeah. This is the beginning of the twenty-six accounting year. Every year, the city has to go through the tax budget process. We try or attempt to identify, first of all, the funds and the funding that we will have in, for, available for us in two thousand twenty-six. One of the key points of this is it sets the millage on the property taxes that the county auditor collects and then disperses to the city. That may not sound like a, a very big deal, but it's about two million bucks annually, combined with all of the different types of taxes that we collect. So it, it does have. So it, it does have a, an impact on the city when you talk about property taxes. So it's very important. This process has been around for a very long period of time. Governments develop tax budgets. They submit them to the county tax commission, which includes the auditor, the treasurer, and the prosecuting attorney's office. They review it and then they will send another form back to you accepting those millage rates so that they can begin that process. But along with that, it's the beginning of the two thousand twenty-six appropriations period. As you know, and the most recently in the last year or two, why we've been very fortunate to be able to pass an appropriations relatively soon after we finished one year to be able to go into the next year with an appropriations. And with that, this document here is the beginning of that process for us. It includes all of the anticipated revenues that come in there or that we anticipate will come in to the city. It also anticipates the expenditures going out of the city. It includes all the funds, even though we appropriate personal and other, there's about three thousand lines that make up those numbers. They all drill down into two forms, personal services and other. That the personal services, Mr. Miller and I had a conversation, Councilman Miller, excuse me, had a conversation this afternoon about that, in the fact that the personal services includes wages, pensions, hospitalization, and benefits to our employees. The other includes all the other operating expenses that we incur, supplies, construction, equipment, maintenance, you know, there are over a hundred different vehicles the city operates. As of today, we have two hundred and fifty-six employees. It's no small task to, you know, manage the departments and the department heads try to do a very good job of what they're doing, and sometimes with limited resources that we do. The example tonight, and this is document as far from being completed as we know it. It is the beginning, it's the first hearing. You will have another hearing. The mayor and I talked about having a separate hearing, but it falls to where we can have it during these public comment sections or public hearings and then submit it to the county in ample time. So that's what we'll do. But for example, the general fund is about sixteen million, six hundred thousand dollars in what we anticipate in two thousand twenty-six. Keep in mind, this is not complete, but we are working on it. Okay, the overall, there's special revenue, debt, capital, enterprise funds, internal service funds, and fiduciary funds. The overall, the bottom number, the personal services will be about twenty-six million, nine hundred thousand dollars. The operating departments of the different funds within the city will be the sixty-eight million that you show at the bottom of that page. The overall operating, if this were adopted today for two thousand twenty-six would be ninety-five million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. It is no small feat to, to operate our government. You know, we take a lot for granted sometimes because we have a good community and we have good workers and, and our community looks very nice at this time of year and, and most of times of the year. Unfortunately, it takes a lot of money to operate that. And, you know, it, or we operate departments twenty-four seven. A lot of those departments, nobody sees. But if you call for a policeman or a fireman or turn your spigot on and wash your hands, somebody's there working to do that. And a lot of that is behind the scenes that nobody ever sees. And we hope you don't ever see a policeman or a fireman, not that they're not there, but we just, it takes a lot of money to do that. So there will be a revision of this by the time we get to the second hearing, which will be the final version. We will then have a ordinance to adopt it so that we can move forward with then submitting it to the county for that.
We're not the reason your real estate taxes go up.
No, we aren't. But they are probably the reason why we pay real estate taxes a little bit. That does help fund some of those activities that we just talked about. In this product, we also advance out, we, we budget five years in advance to just, if you could tell me what's going to happen in five years, you're in the wrong business. But in doing it, we do try to project that out so that we can kind of have an idea of what may be coming down the line. It's a very useful tool as we, let's say, build some increases into our operating costs. The price of gasoline today is what? Just under three dollars. It affects us when the prices of electric, natural gas, gasoline, diesel fuel go up. The city is not immune to that cost, just like everyone else. And so we do try to project that a little bit.
Sure. Very good. Thank you, Larry. Any comments for Larry?
So what you're saying, Larry, is that this is the first draft of the big, beautiful budget for two thousand twenty-six?
I would not call it a big, beautiful budget for.
I would call it a lean budget.
I would call it more of a functioning or lean budget for two thousand twenty-six. There is not a whole lot of extras built into this budget because we have a lot of construction projects going on and some of those will be completed. But along with that, we also have to anticipate some additional construction projects into the future that are being mandated upon us by other outside agencies. And in doing that, it, it's a tool budgets appropriations have to breathe. Just because we pass it and say we're going to spend this amount of money, as most of you recall, at the end of the year, we appropriate all the money in the, that the income tax collects and disperse it to all of those funds that use that money. So it, it has to breathe. It is not carved in stone to where it can't be changed one way or another. And we, that's just how it is.
Some of those big projects, I'll just remind you, the E Cub Basin out at the wastewater center, which is expected to approach probably somewhere between seven and ten million dollars or more in total. We're talking about embarking on our construction of our public transit headquarters. Yes, we're getting grants for all of these projects, but those grants don't cover them in their entirety. So if I'm honest with you, when I look at the list of all the big projects that are planned for the immediate future, I will confess to you, at this point, I don't know how we're paying for all of them. These are things like the additional road in the industrial park, which is about two million, so that we can accommodate the several hundred thousand square foot facilities that are getting ready to be built out there. This involves the sewer trunk line around US forty-two from Mifflin Avenue, all the way back around to Middle Rousberg Road. Probably a four million dollar project when it's all said and done, but necessary to facilitate more housing growth around the city. Improvements will be, need to be made in Smith, Smith Road and that sewer system because obviously we're getting closer to seeing more houses built out there and the condos should be starting soon. I believe our engineering office just recently approved the plans for that project to start. And so those are, those are huge generational projects. Those are improvements that will last beyond us, hopefully, God willing, but they are monumental in price tag. And so it is, there's certainly not a lot of extra wiggle room. In fact, there is no wiggle room. So we may be coming to you for a loan, so get ready, Dennis.
All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll open it up to the general public. If anyone here has a comment or question regarding the two thousand twenty-six tax budget hearing, now would be the time to speak up. Seeing none then, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. Thank you for the good information, Larry.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we'll move back to Mayor's comments.
Okay, the first thing I will hit on, simply because Councilmember Dennis Miller brought it up, and that is July fourth, community fireworks. Of course, we all know those are brought to us by our Rotary Club of Ashland. They've been providing that fireworks display for, I believe, forty-plus years at this point. Now, when I say they provide that display, that means that they have been in charge of raising the funds to pay for that fabulous fireworks display each year. And once again, it will be out at Freer Field. That is going to be the new location for the fireworks because we can no longer hold them at Community Stadium with all the wonderful improvements they've made in that location. The council member is right. We do have a good plan put together with all of our local police officers and our city street department and some of our parks employees. We're going to have plenty of people out there that night, both directing traffic beginning at five P M. So people can get in the area efficiently, as well as at the end, when people are going home. Now, we are recommending that people who want to arrive early do so around six P M. That'll give our crews time to be in their places and so on. But at six P M is when you can arrive on the field. To be quite honest with you, we're kind of, and we've referred to it as such, it's a very patriotic tailgate party. Last year, the weather didn't cooperate, but it very much looked like a tailgate party. Folks were afraid to stray too far from their cars and trucks, so they just plopped their chairs out by their vehicle, got the cooler out and got their food out, and many of them spent several hours there before the downpour came. But this year, we're making it a little bit more organized and we're hoping for sunshine. And right now, we've already released a map, so you can see where the parking areas will be. But of course, the staff and police officers will guide you to the perfect spot. We also are going to offer a live presentation from WRDL, Ashland University's FM station, eighty-eight point nine. And basically, this is what the schedule will look like. We're recommending that anyone who wants to arrive early can do so, starting at six P M. Sometime around seven, music will start playing because there's going to be a huge sound system out on the field. That, of course, will be an eclectic mix of different kinds of patriotic music from different genres. Then at eight o'clock, WRDL will start broadcasting from Freer Field. They too have assembled quite an eclectic mix of patriotic songs. And then at nine fifteen, it will go live on the field. And by that, I mean there will be a presentation by the Rotary. They will draw the winner of their raffle contest again this year. I think the prize package is what, worth seventy-five hundred or somewhere in that neighborhood? Yes, so that's great. But there'll be some comments about the show and the sponsors and so on. There'll be a stage out there. And we'll also have two jumbo, jumbo LED screens. Is that what it is? LCD? LED? LED screens out there. So folks will be able to see that up close and personal. Then, once again, iHeartRadio, W N C O, one oh one point three, has put together a patriotic soundtrack that will begin playing right at the start of the fireworks show on nine forty-five, if the weather cooperates. So you'll be able to either tune your radio dial to W N C O, one oh one point three F M, or eighty-eight point nine F M, WRDL, Ashland University Station, if you want to hear what's going on at the field. And of course, like I said, there'll be a giant sound system out on the field, so everyone should be able to hear that's there celebrating together that night. We recognize that it can be a challenge for folks to leave all at once. We see that during Balloon Fest each year. They did a great job this year getting people out quickly and efficiently. And we think we're going to be able to do even better at the fireworks. So God willing, that'll be the case. But we'll have plenty of manpower out there to keep people moving. Incidentally, I do want to tell people, just so you can be in preparation, because a lot of people do watch these meetings, while you'll be able to come in off Center Street and you'll be able to come in off Chestnut Street and exit while the pre-show's taking place. At the end of the evening, all of the traffic that's exiting out onto Center will be forced to turn right. All the traffic exiting out on Chestnut will be forced to turn left, just as an FYI, in case that helps anyone for your planning purposes. Our city's not that big, so even if you have to turn the opposite direction of where your home's located, you should be able to find a cut through pretty close to get back on track and get home. But that'll keep the cars moving nonstop. So that would be my addition to what you shared, Councilmember Miller. July fourth, I hate to give a rain date because we don't usually cancel for the rain. But if the weather were threatening, then it could be moved to Saturday night, same location, July fifth. All right, now, here's some other items. If you haven't had a chance, council members, I think most of you did because you were out there this week, weren't you? Or last week. And that is the new pickleball courts are complete out at Brookside West. Those, of course, were provided largely by, largely, the largest portion of the funds were provided by Lloyd and Norma Weigant. The only addition that's left at the particular location is the plaque. The plaque is being made and then we'll install that as soon as it arrives. But it's a beautiful facility. And the folks that are in charge of the nearby bicycle pump track, they have pledged to spruce it up and bring more attention to it here in the future. So I think you're going to start to see Brookside West get a lot more attention than it has even in the past with all the ballgames. So the pickleball courts now are complete. And if you haven't had a chance, I don't even play pickleball, but I can tell you, they look good. And so do all the little buildings and coverings they put up, build out there as well. We're getting lots of questions about whether or not we're going to have the Big Splash Pool Party. The Big Splash Pool Party has become quite the affair, and we are going to ask the council members to be ready that day because we may need your help. Let me tell you, it wasn't long ago at the Big Splash Pool Party, we thought we had a success when we had four hundred people come during the day. I think last year, we had about twelve hundred. So we're getting big out there at the pool party. But that'll be July twenty-sixth, July twenty-sixth, and that is eleven to seven P M on July twenty-sixth. And the young people that are between the age of two and fifteen are free. Between two and fifteen, you're free. And then anyone else is two dollars a person. So it's still a good deal, no matter what age you might be. And, okay, the date is the twenty-fifth. I've been corrected. July twenty-fifth, July twenty-fifth. July twenty-fifth, I think it's a Friday, isn't it? So July twenty-fifth, July twenty-fifth, it is a Friday. We'll have lots of great food, free food for the kiddos between two to fifteen. And we'll have lots of great food available for those that are not falling in that age category as well. But we will require that you pay for it at the concession stand. Now, I also want to draw your attention to the improvements that you might be seeing on East Main Street at our police department. If you haven't noticed by now, we have finished the construction of two wonderful brick entryway, I don't know what we're going to call it, entryway markers. It's, looks quite classy down there. And that is just the start of an improvement program that we're embarking on this year at the police department. In addition to those walls, you're going to see three giant flag poles erected, one with the American flag, state flag, and our, probably our city flag will fly on the third pole. We also, soon, will see activity at the police department facility itself. A lot of that stucco has been deteriorating and falling off or chipping off. That's all going to be covered with a material that's very similar to what you see on the roof of the police department. And then we are finally going to add the name of the building to the building. Believe it or not, it's always shocked me that for the past twenty years, we've had our police department there and nowhere along the corridor would you be able to identify that if you didn't see all the police cars sitting out front. So by the time this is done, it will be very clear that that is the Ashland Police Department and Municipal Court. And it's going to look great because it is a building we should take pride in. And it's. And it's great that it's on a major entryway into our city. We're also going to put one of our famous stainless steel A's up there in the peak, so it truly will fit in with the Ashland brand. So we're excited about that. A lot of that project's being paid for by donation. So it's pretty impressive that we live in a community where people will pay, make a donation to help with your building improvements or your aesthetic improvements to such a building. This week, I had a meeting with some of our liquor license holders from downtown, in other words, bar owners and restaurant owners. The purpose for their meeting with me is, we've come to the point of about two years after we enacted our DORA. At this point, there haven't been any problems. We've checked with the police department. There hasn't been a single issue or instance where there was an incident that was at all involving the DORA. And the business owners downtown, in particular, restaurant and bar owners, are asking us to consider making it Monday through Saturday, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. It would not be on Sundays, but I just wanted to let you know that tonight. You can give some thought to it. But that's not unlike many communities, but that is the request. So you can take some time to consider that, and maybe if you get a chance, talk to some of the owners of these facilities downtown. And then, finally, the thing that I'm going to add here, just as a, well, no, I've got two more, just because people are calling about electric aggregation. By now, not only did you probably get your letter from Ohio Edison saying that you were kicked off the Dynegy program and you were going to them, but you've probably got a second letter now, and that is from Dynegy. And that is the letter that says, "Okay, now, if you want to be on it, you're on it. You're on the new Dynegy contract." It's .0899 is the rate, which is a competitive rate. And you know, I've seen on social media, some people have tagged me in posts that said things like, "Well, I went shopping on my own, and I might have found a better rate," and so on. I would read all of the fine print, folks, because I'm not sure you're going to find a deal that's too much better than this. This is a three-year contract. So .0899, and yes, it is common for energy companies to offer a rock-bottom entry fee or entry rate, but that rate usually skyrockets above and beyond anything else that we might be able to secure for you. So be careful if you're trying to strike it out on your own and find a better deal. But if you want to stay on the city program, and you've been on the city program in the past, you don't have to do anything. Don't do anything, don't do anything. All right?
Just a reminder, if you've moved, you need to call Dynegy and make sure you're still on it, because it doesn't follow you. So if you've moved recently, make sure you call.
It's a good, good suggestion, absolutely. All right, and finally, the Assistant Law Director and I were talking before the meeting. He and I can remember, I don't know if it was five years, seven years ago, probably seven or eight years ago, actually, sitting in the county commissioner's meeting room before it was remodeled, and sitting with the previous leaders of the Pump House Ministries and others to try to figure out how to settle the tax debt on that Pump House property building and the big rubble pile so that we could get started cleaning it up. Well, I am pleased to tell you that, although I haven't verified yet this evening, but as of 5:00 this afternoon, I believe all parties have signed on the closing for the Pump House. So that means that is the apartment development, and they are raring to go. So thanks to the help of Andrew at the last minute, as well as our friends Jennifer Chipner, especially, at Ashland Title, and Keith Bowles and Hal Schaefer from the Community Improvement Corporation, they performed a small miracle today, getting all these different steps that needed to be completed so that Ashland Urban is the name of the company. We, Vision is what we know them as, but that's what they're calling themselves for this particular project, could close. And I'd hate to say another timeframe, but they, but they are telling us we could see action this month. So we've waited a long time for that. From looking at the mess to cleaning up the mess, to finding the developer, to going through all the processes securing the parcels, and tonight, it looks like, if all went as planned, we should have signed. And that would mean that the city will be receiving a $400,000 check for those parcels. So that's great. Well, that's the grand finale.
All right.
We'll hope that it happened while we were in this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, then, we'll entertain comments and questions from our audience. This will be pertaining to anything on the agenda this evening?
I would like to thank the City Council for the new pickleball court set, Brookside West. They play a tournament out there with LifeWise, and they were wonderful.
Great.
Wonderful courts.
Yes, they are.
They're bigger than the ones that we had on Road by two floors.
Great. Well, you're welcome. And
Thank the Weigants.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they are truly friends of the city.
Yes.
The Weigants, and we do thank them for their contribution. So now, if you have anything that doesn't pertain to tonight's agenda, the council will be here after the meeting, and we'll be happy to talk to anyone at that point. With that, then, if there's no other business, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.